Okay, so the next item on the agenda, and I'll just talk a little bit here. It's for the Davenport Community School District update. I'm gonna start, just because circumstances are a little bit different right now. So, as we shared yesterday, that was reported in the news that TJ is in the hospital right now with COVID, and so we are working on sort of a different support structure for the time being. So today you're gonna hear from Amy and I, and Bill, and Shane, is that correct? Amy's nodding. So I'm gonna start and pass it off to them. We wanted to make sure you still did enough, because we also wanted to let you know that we're having to make some adjustments based on circumstances. So we wanted to make sure the board was informed.
So is there like a person serving in, like a...
Yep, that's what I'm gonna talk about. So, in light of this, what we're having happen is Bill, and he's on the screen again now, is gonna fill in more for TJ in that role, to take on some of that support, and Shane as well. So some of the hands-on work that they were doing in the district, Bill and Shane are gonna take on more responsibility. And then also adding in some additional support from the AEA, which maybe they're talking about, to help backfill some of that. So we know it's not gonna look exactly the same, but because they've been very involved with the work all along, it's sort of a natural transition. It's just gonna require more from them. The other thing is, we wanna make sure that TJ is reassured that he needs to focus on himself, and we will take care of the rest of the work. We are in communication with his wife. I talked to her last night, and Amy has her number, so we can make sure we stay in touch with how he's doing. And we'll make sure we report out any updates to the board as well. You know, the district team has been working very diligently on their corrective action plan, specifically focusing on budget and the crisis response and violence prevention work, which was two of the primary points of conversation that we've been having, and tied to the citations for the district. So we have had significant work being done there, and great support from Bill and Shane for TJ, and a shift in TJ's ability to be successful at some network as well. You know, we're very grateful for the AEA in this part, because they're very critical to the success of this work, and having them right there on the ground and being strong partners with us is really beneficial to the district, particularly now. But even outside of these circumstances, it's key to have them right there in the area to provide that support. We meet twice a week, Amy and I, with Bill, Shane, and TJ. Gary Sinclair has been joining those meetings as well, talking about progress, what is needed, what support they need from the team, and then just answer questions and work through, you know, how this is moving forward. Amy and I did visit the district on October 28th as a surprise visit. We didn't tell them we were coming, and we went to the district. We were there about three or four hours, visited with several staff, one-on-one, got some feedback, and visited some schools, and that was very valuable. Got us some good insights, and let them know, you know, that we care about the work that they're doing there, and we are gonna be a part of this partnership as well. The district, you know, has a lot of work to do, particularly in terms of budget cuts and restructuring some of their priorities, but their processes, even to date, are vastly improved. And I don't know if I'm gonna step on anybody's toes if I start talking about this, but just from the, you know, they didn't have a line item budget, and so decisions were being made in the absence of really concrete information. They did not have a way to track or identify their staff, or how that was tied to any dollar amount. All those things are quickly being changed, and then just prioritizing what work, you know, needs to be done right now. You know, and there's lots of things we want to do, but really prioritizing what needs to be done to help get the district in the right direction. But just their processes, and how the team has kind of restructured their work, we've seen great improvement there already. Bill will provide an update on the CFO, what that is looking like, and the financial part as well. So I probably went too far on that a little bit, Bill, but really, you know, there's certainly additional challenges now, but we have seen great strides and a great commitment to the work. I will say the thing that was one of the most positive takeaways from the visit is that some of the people we talked to shared that they had hope, for the first time, genuinely, and were excited about the work that they were able to do, and so that was good to hear. I think that's all I have. Amy, I don't know if I'm handing it to you or Bill now.
I just have one question. So Dr. Kabelski, do we know if, because they said that she could be, like, do something else in the district, or something, or I don't know.
Yep. So what they have been working on, the last that we were updated on, is Dr. Kabelski has a list of tasks. There was like, for example, a transportation evaluation, what that would look like, and he would report back to TJ, but is not working in the district, you know, outside of the district. So TJ is the public face of that role, still obviously employed as the district contracted superintendent, reporting to DJ in terms of accountability for these tasks. And then outside of that, it's more the district's decision on what that looks like going forward. But that has been the work that has been done so far. And I don't know if there's any updates on that from what we last saw, Bill, if you're aware of, that I didn't mention. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna pass it off to other questions on that. Okay, I'm passing it to Amy.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm just gonna set up what we're gonna go over that's in your packet. So you have in your board packet for Davenport, a few things. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is the chart that's labeled "Davenport Corrective Actions Update." I'm gonna go over that. It's gonna be really relatively brief this month. Shane Williams, who is the Ed Services Director at the AEA, is gonna also chime in on some of the work that's been going on with the corrective actions. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Bill Duckert to talk a little bit about the search for a Chief Financial Officer, and set up some of the financial conversation. He will be using the handout you have, that says "Key Assumptions," and says "General Fund Excepted Green Cells" at the top of it. So it's just one chart, has a big blue arrow on it. And then you're gonna hear from Gary Sinclair, who is acting as the district's Chief Financial Advisor as we do the search for CFO for the district. He's gonna go over, it's a Word document, that is the Finance Status and Action Overview, and then also the spreadsheet that has a lot of yellow lines in it, that's called Attachment D1. These are some things that Gary has put together for the district with a lot of help from district folks for submission to the School Budget Review Committee for their appearance in December. So it's kind of the order we're gonna do things in. So I'm gonna go back to the Davenport Corrective Actions Update. You saw a version of this document the last time that we met in September. So this is the document that Davenport is to submit to the State Board, well, to us, and then we give it to you for every time that you meet. And so they have a monthly update tab, and basically it's a big spreadsheet that's got their action plan in it. And what happened in September is, we actually gave you one that had our commentary in it, because what they submitted was insufficient. And that's when we changed some things up with the district, and you voted to take some operational control of things there. This is what it should look like on a normal basis when you receive the monthly report. So this is the October status for their action plan. And I think what I really wanna draw your attention to this month is a couple of things. First of all, all of Davenport's current data are filled out exactly as we would expect. So that third column, where it says "Davenport's Current Data" in this area, those are the measures that we set up for Davenport to report to the State Board on, that some State Board members and Davenport representatives agreed to back in July. And so they are reporting on those appropriately, and it's okay if they're not all done. They're not supposed to be done yet. It is a year-long action plan. What we wanna see is that they are faithfully coming together as a leadership team, evaluating themselves, and putting the data in so that you are able to see, they are able to see, their local boards are able to see where they're really at. The other thing I wanna point out is the Status column has been redone. So you have to go to the bottom of the document to see the key here to the Status column, but they've redone it. So, you know, in looking this over, I think it is an honest and faithful attempt to rate themselves on where they really think they are in completing these actions. And again, it's okay to not have all fours here, but where they have said that they have a four, those things are really done, and they have evidence to support them. And where they have said they're at a one, that's honest, and we also know the work that they are doing to get there, or we understand the challenges right now that they are experiencing. So putting the Mississippi Bend folks with the district team to work on these and to help us have a better understanding of where things are in the district has been, I think, the right thing. In fact, a conversation that I had with TJ before he got sick was that he felt that this was the right thing to help reveal to the district leadership team a lot of the things that they needed to accomplish that some of them were unaware of. So we feel really good about the way this has been filled out, and that we're getting real information that we can rely on and have a good back and forth with the district. The main focus of their work right now, there's actually two. One is finance, because they do need to make some budget cuts, and we know that those are gonna be tough, and it's gonna affect everything else that is on their corrective action list. And then the other big focus is their crisis response and violence prevention work. So you will find that work embedded in letter E, PBIS, which is at the bottom of page four. And instead of reading from this report for you, I think what I'd like to do is see if Shane wants to do just a brief overview of the work that the district has been doing on crisis response and violence prevention. They have set up a wonderful plan for implementation, and now Shane is working with them on the implementation of it. So Shane, do you wanna just give us a couple of minutes on the CRVP work?
Yeah, thank you, Amy. I will say, just in general, over the course of the past few weeks, we have seen a level of orchestration and focus on and alignment of efforts that is a great cause for optimism. TJ really established a level of clarity and prioritization on those two main tasks that Amy articulated for the State Board, namely finance, as well as CRVP, that has really caused a number of significant actions moving in the right direction, and I think you'll see the data on the spreadsheet as a testament to that. So with that optimism, clearly there's still a formidable path ahead to make sure that Davenport is on a sustainable path, not only with their finances, but with CRVP, as well as all the corrective actions. But I do wanna highlight a few components that I think are, again, are evidence of why there's cause for optimism. Specifically, there was a deep recognition that there's interdepartmental fragmentation. What you see in finance is emblematic of a lot of what you'll see across the departments in Davenport, and that is just a lack of coherence and a lack of systematized processes. And one area where I think that that's really ground zero for that, and it's hypercritical for Davenport to get that level of coherence fixed, is in the area of emotional and physical safety in their school buildings. So along with Director Lebo and Amy, we also work directly with Brad Niebling and Barbara Oland, who have invested a significant amount of time over the years in Davenport. And so the team at Mississippi Bend, comprised of Diane Campbell, Courtney Olson, Kim Hoffman, and myself, calibrate with Barbara and Brad on a regular basis, just to make sure that we're on the right page with respect to CRVP. Jake Klitsch and Corey Guy are the two leaders within the district that are orchestrating that effort, and they put together a series of structures and cascades within the district that will help with the tight implementation of CRVP. What they've done thus far is, they have developed an action plan specifically on the consensus and commitment building. So it's recognizing across all adults, it doesn't matter if they're teachers in the classroom, principals, bus drivers, food service, custodians, that everybody in the district, if you're an adult, you recognize that the single most thing adults need to do is to ensure the emotional and the physical safety of the children who attend there. That effort is undergoing right now. Buildings are engaging in a professional development module with respect to that consensus and commitment building. And any staff and/or buildings or groups of folks who don't feel that level of consensus or commitment building will have a follow-up session. They're using data, that's an embedded part of that CRVP response, to show their staff why they need to do this. They focused on some disproportionality data that is also embedded in the number, for example, of referrals and expulsions and violent events, and how adults respond to those in a way that is antithetical to having a truly embedded focus on equity. So they're surfacing all of those really difficult conversations right now in their district. The next step, in terms of the training for all adults, is what do you do when there is a physically violent event in the district? And how do we have a systemic approach so that it doesn't matter what building it happens at, or where it happens in the district, that there is a process that is in place that ensures the safety of all the children involved, as well as the adults involved? Because keep in mind, there was a survey that was done in Davenport last year, and in that survey, almost one in five secondary teachers noted that they did not feel safe within their respective building. So this is not just an issue of focusing on emotional and physical safety of the kids, while that is paramount, it's also about ensuring that teachers and all staff members feel like they're working in a safe environment. So that's where they're at right now. You can see the, kind of the text there in terms of how their cascaded level of structures are going to be used and leveraged as they move forward with CRVP. They have some great leadership, they now have a level of direction, their priorities are straight, and I'm confident that we are going to not only move the needle with respect to the corrective actions in CRVP, but surpass those and put Davenport on a path to sustainable improvement with their environment for kids and for adults.
Thanks, Shane. I just wanna add one last thing about the corrective action plan before we move on to the finance portion, and that is that I can't say enough that this plan is developed completely with the goal being to restore equity and not just equitable access to instruction, but doing away with the disproportionality that we were seeing in suspension and expulsion, and sometimes in placement for kids with disabilities. And one of the things that comes up sometimes with people as they look at the plan, and so even local board members, is a desire to determine, so how are we doing something about disproportionality in this plan? And to act directly on disproportionality. And so I wanna just reemphasize, every time we talk about this, that doing the things that are written in this plan, like working on MTSS and, or multi-tiered systems of supports and positive behavior interventions and supports, the foundation of which is having crisis response and violence prevention, are the things that solve those problems of disproportionality, and are the foundation of having that equitable environment and opportunity for kids. So I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that this entire plan is designed to ensure that their system is equitable, because I know it is a priority for this district, but also for all of us in the state. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Bill to kind of transfer us into the financial conversation about getting a CFO, and then to get us to Gary to talk about finances, because I know you'll have other questions after that.
Thank you, Amy. So the work, you know, I think you heard Shane talk about the work of some of the AEA team working with some different levels in the district, and we feel like the partnership between the department and the AEA and the district is going well, and I think you heard that from Shane. I believe the same thing can be said about some of the areas that I'm focusing on, which is more board development and training, the finance piece that we've been talking about, as well as just working with leadership to get all of those things on the same page. The, so specifically, the CFO conversation, the last time this was in front of the State Board, there was a motion made to hire a acting superintendent, or a state hired superintendent, and also to hire a interim CFO in both of those positions for six months. And one of the things that our group, Dr. Lebo, Amy, and Shane, myself, TJ, agree that I would take the lead in searching for a CFO. I literally have had dozens and dozens of conversations about that position, and obviously the first conversations that I had was in fulfilling the action of the State Board. Pretty quickly, probably within the first week or maybe week and a half, became obvious that we were not going to find candidates who wanted that six-month kind of an assignment that, I mean, I don't believe the candidates felt like they could make progress and be successful in a six-month timeframe, that they viewed it as a bigger job and a longer picture to see it through. And so our group decided collectively that it would be probably a better, more effective strategy, just to move forward in getting the CFO position in place permanently, and therefore not having a transition from where we are now to a six-month person, and then in six months, or at which time appropriate, have yet another transition to a district that didn't have a permanent CFO. So we agreed to do that. Again, I've been working hard to find candidates that would be viewed by our leadership group as appropriate candidates. The district actually had run a search in 2018, and then earlier this year as well. In addition to that, there had been a conversation with the same search firm that was used in their superintendent search to find a CFO. I don't really know the answer to why some of the candidates that were produced in those efforts were never really acted upon as candidates. I haven't spent a lot of time in that backward-looking action. I have instead, you know, focused more on moving forward, but I've had numerous conversations with IASB, Executive Director there, Nancy Blow, has been incredibly helpful, and she herself has had numerous conversations about the Davenport position, really, over the last nine months. And so, in a way, it was me kind of picking up on some of the work that she had done, but together brainstorming, we really kind of went through almost position by position across the state of, are there candidates who would, A, be appropriately trained, certified, and able to do this job, and B, would there be candidates that would think about making a move? I did talk to several people that we came up with in that conversation, but I didn't have any luck with finding a candidate that was willing to make a move at this point. So then the next thing I did was, I went back and started to look at their candidate pool that had been generated previously. And I was actually shocked to tell you, because I made the assumption when I started these conversations, that that candidate pool was probably substandard, and that was why the district hadn't moved forward with that candidate pool. So my shock was that the candidate pool actually was surprisingly strong. And so I made some calls to the candidates that were internally generated, both in 2018 and in 2020, and most folks had either had moved on to other positions. However, we did find a candidate in that pool that is a former CFO in Iowa, very successful at the 4A level in Iowa, and had for some not related to job performance issues at all, but had some other issues that had forced him to move on to a different job opportunity. But at this point now, he's anxious to interview with the idea of moving back into a school CFO position. So we felt like, okay, we have a good candidate with some Iowa experience, and that had been something that we had prioritized of finding, a person who was certified as a school business official in Iowa, and hopefully having some experience. And so that was kind of our first breakthrough of having that person be interested. And then I turned the attention to the candidate pool that the search firm, the outside search firm, had come up with. And fortuitously, at almost the exact same time, I received a recommendation call from Kurt Subra, who is the CFO at Heartland AEA. And he made a recommendation of a candidate that he thought might be a really strong candidate, although the person wasn't, doesn't have school experience, and would not come in as a certified school business official. Kurt has known this person for a number of years, and their experience is fairly robust in the private sector. And so that was also someone who had made an application through the search firm. So at this point right now, we feel like we have two really strong candidates, and we have tentatively planned on interviews here within the next week, and feel optimistic that we are going to be able to make a recommendation for hiring a permanent CFO that will be able to work with Gary Sinclair over the next few weeks and months, and be able to hit the ground running at whatever time is deemed appropriate by the department and by the State Board. So that's been the process on that, as we have gone through all those steps to end up where we are. And although along the way, there were some times when it didn't seem optimistic at this point right now, we are optimistic of being able to bring a quality candidate into that position. So jumping from there, and Amy, correct me if I'm getting off course, but jumping from there into some of the work that has been done, we have worked with IASB, and we have a program plan from now through March, usually either twice or three times per month, having a segment of the board meeting or of the committee of whole meeting that they have each month, be comprised of board learning scenario, and just personal examination of how would an effective board operate. So we're excited about that. The board was very open to that, and I think the board is accepting of this, and I believe there's reason to be optimistic that the board will go through that training and take it seriously. And I believe that by March, we will make some substantive progress with the board in the board training room. So that gets back to the last piece that we focused on, and that has been finance. Gary Sinclair is on the call as well, and I'll turn it over to him doing a little bit, but he has been instrumental, has been a lifesaver in his work in the district. As you heard Dr. Lebo and Amy reference, the district really hasn't had a line item budget before. And so when you come in and you start to say, okay, how do we fix this? How do we get... How do we get the district on a course to be in a more stable position? And know what revenues are, know what expenditures are, and make sure that revenues exceed expenditures and make sure that unspent balance is being paid attention to. It's pretty tough until you get some of that basics. And Gary has made an amazing amount of progress in a fairly short period of time. And so we're very thankful for that. But I I guess I wanted to cover the tab that Amy made reference to. I'm just scrolling down in your packet. So it's, I think it's it's at the very last page of the the packet for the Davenport section. And this is really kind of where the story starts, in my opinion. And I think I think that Gary and and Amy and Dr. Lebo all agree that this is maybe the root of where some of the finance issues started. So in March of this year, Davenport appeared before SBRC. And at that point, was putting in in front of the SBRC, the plan to create financial stability that would lead into the future. So when you look at that form, you can see this is what Davenport produced, gave to SBRC, and went through that with SBRC. And if you look at those figures, and we're not going to walk through each one of those columns as far as how it plays out. But if you take time to do that, you will see that this is a plan that it it works pretty well. And the basis of this plan working pretty well is down at the bottom where you see staffing changes. So if you look at this fiscal year of what what was the plan for this fiscal year that was going to put the district into a place where finances looked relatively workable over the next five years? It starts with a commitment of the district to SBRC to reduce thirty teachers, to reduce five administrators, to reduce one associate, to reduce five other professional positions, to reduce one office clerical positions, and to reduce three operations folks. And the total of reducing all of those positions came out to a projected reduction of a little over $5 million. If that had happened and cost expenditures during this year for personnel were $5 million less, it would have done two things. It would have made the, you know, just the revenue expenditure ratio much more palatable. It also would have made the ratio of personnel costs to the overall budget much more palatable. And it would have set the district up to do everything else that's on the sheet. Unfortunately, and again, not trying to play detective and look backward, but in in trying to be forward looking, you have to look at this a little bit. But unfortunately, for whatever reason, those staffing changes did not take place. And that that really has set the work in motion of what we need to do for this this year. So Gary is going to talk about some of the work that he has done. We did have a very explicit conversation about this with the board because the the Davenport Board is not a group of people that is uncaring or trying to to be rogue. They've they have, I believe, learned some lessons over time. And I believe that they want to do the right things, and I believe that they thought they had done many of the right things. And there's some, there's some parts of that 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 are likely true. But in this, in this, which was probably the biggest decision, this is something that wasn't followed through upon. And so I'm going to turn it over to Gary to talk about it from there forward. But I will tell you that we went through this with the board, and I believe the board does understand why some of the cuts that are being talked about now have to happen. And although, again, nobody's ever happy to make cuts, I do believe that they understand it is a necessity. So with that, Gary, I will I will let you take over and and go through a couple of different items.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you. I do want, I do want to say upfront that I've had great support from staff at the district. Lisa Cruz and others have worked extensively to provide what we needed. We've developed an extensive report on the financial status and planning for the SBRC. What we're giving you is kind of the high view oversight of that. Within the next week to two, we'll be moving to Forecast Five reporting. And I'll talk a bit more about that. But what I want to do is to start to talk about the status and action review. Now, I had the screen or refused to have a copy of it. Amy, do I share my screen so they can see what I'm talking about?
Sorry, you cut out there for a second. Yeah, it would be great if you could share the screen.
Okay, very good. This is kind of an overview. And really, what this is, is I took the presentation that the district is making to the SBRC and just pulled out the highlights. So really, what this shows is what I think we've accomplished. Number one is we developed a finance committee. We meet monthly. We've already had our first meeting. We have three agenda items to review the monthly reporting, to look at a general fund analytic about their finances, and to look at a special education analytic about their finances. On day one of me starting to work for the district, we froze all discretionary spending and hiring. We have started backup on the federal programs after we've analyzed those and identified the revenue and expenditures. Next week, we will restart discretionary spending, but it will be close to half of what they had allocated for last year. I think the greatest development that's occurred in the district is the line item budget. And they had some form of that, but nothing that allowed them to use to make decisions. You know, we looked at all revenues, and I kind of started with them with the premise that if you know an actual number, if you can find an actual revenue and you use an estimate, it's financial malpractice. So we really went into where does the revenue come? Probably the single biggest effort from the district was providing a list of every employee, their salaries, and all of their benefits. We then transitioned to that report to the actual line item budget. That's eighty-four point three percent of their budget that we now know is tied to contracts. Discretionary spending was originally set at the prior year's amount. And since then, we have dropped that by half. So the discretionary spending is going to be half. We reviewed all categorical funding and spending. Misaligned revenue, which took a dramatic drop last year, we believe is going to recover, primarily related to federal programs. Now, we'll have to do a little more. We'll have to do a little more next year because there'll be some one time funding that's occurring this year. With all these adjustments, the district is projected to end fiscal year twenty-one with a positive unspent authorized budget. But it doesn't meet the expectations of the SBRC. The SBRC wants the district to be positive without including any estimates. Things such as special ed deficit, things such as the cost of English language learner. When we took those out, after all this work, they were $2.6 million deficit. We then identified that we needed to cut at a minimum a little over $4 million. That's to give us a a balance that is at least reasonable to start. Now, that cut is occurring. We're doing an early retirement program, second semester, that saves about $2 million. And then a little over $2 million is coming from the reduction in category or in discretionary spending, change of the printer modeling, not filling any position when it becomes open, if the duties can be reassigned. So we're targeting cutting a little over $4 million in the balance of this year, which is very difficult. The greatest challenges that we face this year is overcoming the insurance holidays. They took three last year, which is in excess of $4 million. Making that insurance holiday up is very difficult. Also, paying the cost of substitute teachers full year, special ed cost and deficit has really changed and COVID. The district, I think it's important to point out that the district is talking to the actuary about if an insurance holiday is possible. It is absolutely not something that we want to do or that I would recommend. But if we need to do it in June to stay positive, it is something that we will consider. With all this said, the district is projected to end fiscal year twenty-one at with a $1.6 million positive balance. Now, when you add in the other variables, it's much, much higher. One of the things that we need to make the state board aware of is the gigantic swing in special ed deficit. Last year, we ended the year at a surplus $471,000. Right now, this year is projected to end with a negative $9 million. That has to do with a significant reduction in the number of students that they count in special ed and the increase in cost associated with special ed. The district has set some realistic assumptions moving forward. And I just talked to Lisa Cruz today, and we're going to organize a meeting next week to start doing our five year modeling. When the district looks at that, they need to consider their unspent balance to be at a certain they need to level unspent balance, not as focused on the level of ISB recommends five to fifteen. They don't need to be at fifteen, but they need to be at a level that they can sustain over time. Our next step is to finalize this year's plan and communicate it district wide. Next week, we are going to start the five year projection modeling and plan on presenting that to the board in December. So that's a review of of kind of the major accomplishments in finance that we've done to date. Are there questions at this time?
Gary, with the budget cuts that you're proposing with teachers, administrators, and others, you would get down to salaries and benefits being about eighty percent of the general fund budget?
I'm sorry, the first part of that was what are they?
No, with the cuts you're making with staff, are you going to get down to eighty percent of staffing salaries and benefits being eighty percent of the general fund budget? You said you're at eighty-four now?
Yeah, we will not this year.
Are you getting down to eighty percent?
We will not. The early retirement will help some. But I think to get to closer to eighty, we've got to take a a full look at staffing levels for next year. The district lost four hundred and certified enrollment is down four hundred and about four hundred and sixty to four hundred and seventy kids. When you lose that many kids, you've got to look at rightsizing the district, and that's going to impact staffing levels. We won't get there this year, but my hope is that we would next year.
Does all this include the because they got a $9 million relief right or flashes SBRC, I think, when was that? I can't remember when that was.
In March.
In March. So all this includes the nine million and relief that they got in March?
Yes, it does. All of this includes that, yes. Gary, and you're There are questions on kind of where we have been and where we're going on finances.
Do you look, Gary, at the impact on classroom sizes and a lot of, yeah, on and on and on? Is this something we just have to, we just have to make these cuts regardless of the educational impact? You take that into consideration or tell me, tell me what you're thinking there?
Yeah, what what we'll do is we start to do a five year plan. And and we start the five year plan with basic assumptions on key indicators. Enrollment, supplemental state aid, waitings. So you build the model based on your best judgment. And then you calculate what that means to unspent balance. You don't start at the end and work back. You start at the key assumptions. Once that's made, my belief is we will have to make some additional reductions in the future. Then what we start, we we need to do is start to analyze where is the district compared to other districts of similar size? What is your staffing ratio? What is your spending on supplies? Really, you start to look at where the district is compared to other districts their size. That's how you determine where, if you have to make cuts, where that might be the best place to cut without impacting students. And, you know, certainly, teachers have the greatest impact on students. So avoiding as many cuts in that area as possible is important. But if over a matter of five or six years, you have lost seven, eight hundred kids, you certainly certainly have to look at that staffing level.
And and Mike, to add to that, you know, when Amy and I were there, we were interviewing individuals. One of our questions was about conversations around budget cuts. And and our our driver for TJ and his team is to work as far away from the kids as you can and come in. Our concern when we were there is that the examples that were being shared were directly to kids, and they weren't looking outside and looking a little bit differently. So our job in support with Gary and the team is to take this external view of some things that are happening and things that we see where changes could be made that are out here to help drive these decisions. Because remember, at the end of the day, the decisions are made by by us, not by the district. Well, certainly, we want their support and involvement and an understanding of what's going to be best for the kids. We're helping to drive those conversations a little bit differently, so perhaps they're more effective and will be more supportive and sustainable long term.
One of the other strategies that that we've talked about is just working to ensure efficiency across the district. So and that affects both facilities as well as staffing those facilities. So there will be an effort made to look at the how balanced are those teacher to student ratios across the district? And I think that a director may, if there's a question like that, we have to remember that providing providing efficiency is a way to actually help students as well. There's got to be some reason why this district is eighty-four point three percent of of cost being spent on personnel. And if we compare that to other districts and then figure out ways to put students in a a good position, not just make cuts that create ridiculously sized classrooms, but create situations where every student has access to an efficiently run classroom with a similar size of teacher to student ratio will be one of the projects that TJ and I were planning to work on and and will when he gets back as well.
You also look at where that drawdown is occurring. If we have, if we lose four hundred students to five hundred students, we look at where i- is there any is there any correlation between a certain area of the city or are any schools in the city? Is that something you look at as well?
Yeah, that will, we will look at, you know, each building and find out if there are some of those patterns. And look to see if there, if that's a way that the district can put themselves in a better place in the long term. That conversation has been ongoing for several years of whether the the number of buildings that the district supports right now is appropriate. And, you know, they've been been very adamant of not wanting to do that. And of course, nobody wants to do that. But at the same time, the district has to be run efficiently if we're going to get the the maximum effect of instruction for kids. So that will certainly be a part of of what we look at. So that will certainly be a part of what we look at.
Just one other question, if I might. Bill, and this for Ann too, I think, and Amy. Have we had conversations with the community in some way? There must be some thought process going on part of the community. And we said that they have a public relations nightmare in terms of how they have communicated with the public in the past. I assume we're trying to help fix that in some way. I don't know how aggressively we're doing it, but I can imagine what reducing school buildings would do to create another firestorm in the community. And I can't imagine trying to deal with all of these, these external factors.
And as I said, Director May, that's been going on for at least the last two or three years. And, you know, when the need to do it has been established and gotten very close several times, but then has, for the most part, been backed away from. So you're right, and I think over the course of the six months between now and March, we will have to look at a number of issues in setting a foundation. So right now, what we're trying to do is get the finance issue that drives everything to a much better spot. Then we need to start to do things like engage the community. And frankly, I will tell you, we've, we, while we, Shane was describing some of the work that's happening, and that's really good work. We do have to also get to a point where we're making more direct impact and direct improvements for students across the district as well. You can't do that unless finance works. But once finance gets worked out, then I think the rest of the conversations will start to fall in place. So they're certainly planned.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is Brian Kane. So one of the reasons I think we got a little, that I perceive where things got maybe a little impatient was the prior superintendent was talking about finance, and we were worried that the district was burning down on the crisis side. I respectfully the work, this is great, what I'm hearing about finance. I'm wondering, is there, is there anything about what's happening on the financial cuts that inhibits in any way the crisis response? You know, there was two priorities that Mr. Decker was dealing with. Are we, are we cutting in the crisis response? Are these cuts across the board? Or are we going to target non-crisis response expense revenue to work on that as well? I'm just trying to square the two priorities and which is, are we dealing with both of them or the cuts across the board? Does my question make sense?
Yeah. No, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I can actually speak to that, and then I want to jump back to something that Mike was asking about community involvement, because I think there's a really important point there about finance too. So first of all, we're not cutting into anything that has to do with the work on crisis response and violence prevention. Part of the reason that we're not is that we actually held off on determining how the district was going to use any of their federal funds until Gary could work with the district to look at their line item budget and figure out how they could best utilize those funds to continue to pay the staff that need to work on the crisis response and violence prevention and for things that will support that work. And so it happens to be work that can be supported by things like Title IV aid funds, some special education funds, though not all, because you need to be supporting specifically students with disabilities with that money. And then some of the other title program funds. And so we're still fully supporting that work. What we've needed to do, though, is prioritize essential work. And one of the things that Shane has done a great job of is working with the leadership team at the district to look at all of the things they're doing and say, actually, if you've got a list of 60 things you were doing, we've cut that down to six. So, and that's hard, but we are prioritizing things that are evidence-based and really going to work for kids and are the most essential things the district needs to do.
That's great, that's great. Thank you for that. That helps me understand the context of this.
Yeah, you bet. And then the other thing that I would say about the finance piece in particular related to, relating to the community, back to what Mike was talking about, is I agree with Bill absolutely that community engagement is one of the most important things that we need to do here. And we've started some good community engagement, or the district has started some good community engagement when it comes to the crisis response and violence prevention. They've got a great team, a community team going there. The challenge here that, you know, referred to, like the PR issue, is folks in the district and community members have felt that the financial troubles had been resolved, you know, when the SBRC granted that relief, and then there was a plan to make those cuts last spring. When those weren't made, things didn't get resolved. And so this is a switch in the narrative. And so that is difficult to communicate with your community, with your board, with your staff members. And with the number of times that Davenport has gone back to the SBRC with another round of numbers over these past several years, it's difficult to continue to have a new narrative. And so I think it's important to reestablish credibility with the local board and with the community and with the staff that this is solid work that Gary has done with their staff. This is solid work that people have put many long hours into. But people aren't just going to believe us right out the gate, right? That, nope, we can rely on these numbers now. While we all feel really, really good about it, it's still going to be a challenge, and that is one of the key messages that we need to all understand and continue to build that credibility back.
I think if I could maybe put a couple of other comments out there. While I'm, I've been talking about the work that Gary has been focusing on and that we've been working with leadership in the board to focus on, to create that foundation. That certainly isn't, wasn't meant to mean that that's the only thing going on. And as an example, I will tell you, in the last two board meetings, the board has received first a extended discussion. That was the only item of the meeting for a committee of the whole meeting to look at equity and what is happening in the district that where equity is present and what is happening in the district where equity needs to be looked at and improved. The next board, the direct next board meeting after that, there was a presentation put on by staff members coordinated by one of the administrators on disproportionality and how that is affecting students that are disciplined and how is that affecting directly the classroom time that students are being removed from because of discipline situations and how disproportional it is. And so we've talked about what are the things that can happen in those areas as we move forward to help, again, lay a foundation in that area as well. So if I gave you, and I appreciate your question, it was a good question, and I hope you're getting an answer. But if I did give an impression by talking about the emphasis on finance, I do not mean at all to give you the impression that that's all that's happening.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I have a question. The board, was the Davenport School Board, I guess, aware of the financial issues? Because it sounds like so if these cuts have been made, then it would have kind of righted the ship, but these cuts weren't made, so the ship wasn't righted. Were they under the impression that it was already righted? Or were they, were they aware that it wasn't righted? Does that make sense?
The consistent message that we heard when Amy and I were there is that they were under the impression that they were fine. And so the challenge is that, you know, in the absence of any tracking of your staff or line item budget, where did that conclusion come from? So that's what sort of presents us with a challenge now. So they were confident that they were okay.
And it seems, and I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything, I guess, negative towards the board or anything, but I feel like we're constantly in this situation with the board of them not knowing some major things and being in the dark. I don't know if someone's withholding information for them or they're just not asking the right questions. But I feel like this is like, we've been through this before with this board and not understanding some key issues and thinking that everything is just okay and kind of just going along like, la la la, and then all of a sudden, it's like, bam, you know? Which is concerning, to say the least, I'm not going to lie.
So we have seen in the past few meetings, as TJ has reported back to us, that the information that they're being provided now is sort of what they, what they, they would ask questions, not really knowing what they, what they didn't know. But they have grabbed onto this information pretty well and are grateful. They're starting to see things differently, and I think the consistency of what they talk about, having different numbers, having a format and a process, is changing their conversations. I know they had a separate finance group, and then they met with the whole board. So just, and they've had some conversations about just their structure. So that's new, and I think that will be helpful, and that consistency, I think, will maybe help shape how this goes forward. Bill, I know you've been at the meetings. Is there anything you want to add to that in terms of some of that transition? I know this is something TJ was, wanted to talk to you about, but, so I'm not doing nearly as good of a job as he would. But Bill, anything you would want to add from your perspective on that?
Well, yeah, I would emphasize what you just talked about. The very first bullet in this sheet that Gary has on the screen right now. But if it's, if you go up on that, Gary, you can see the very first thing is to improve communication, district financial oversight. The district's added a finance committee, and that committee has two board representatives. They are both board representatives that are new board members. They were elected at the last election, so they've been on for about a year now. And they are both very, very interested in learning. They ask great questions. We had a committee time planned, and not only did the committee run way overtime because they were asking great questions, but then we had them stay after the committee meeting was over because they were still interested. So I would give them kudos in wanting to do more and become informed. And I think part of the problem is, is, you know, if you don't have a line item budget, it's pretty hard to give the board good information. And it is a perfect segue into what Gary is going to talk about next in starting to develop a baseline of information that their board receives each month at every meeting. So Gary, I'll let you go through that real quick.
Sure. Clearly, the most important thing that a school board and a district has to do is not finance. But if they can't do finance, they don't get to do anything else. Finance will eat them up. So that's why they've got to get the finance straightened out. As far as the board being informed, what we're giving them are tools that regardless of who's talking, is what should they be asking for every single month? If you know where the district is, every single month in progress, you will know how they're doing. You're going to know how they end. So the report that you're seeing on your screen, on the screen, is what we developed. Now, Forecast Five will have a report for next month that's much more robust. But what we wanted to do is essentially give the board three things that they should be asking. Where are we this month? How does that compare to where we've been the last four years? And where are we going to end the year? So what this does, this was through October, and this showed that the district had spent $48,707. That is 25% of the budget that we have set. That includes the reductions that we are planning to do. But then to give them context, you can see that it's a little better than we've been in the last four years. So this gives them a sense of where are they this month? How does that compare to the last four years in October? The next, the next thing is the same type of information, but it's revenue. How much revenue have we taken in to date? What percent of our total budget is that? And how, how does that compare to where we have been the last four years? Revenue tends to be on target, but every month, we'll ask them to consider this. More importantly for Davenport is where are you on an unspent authorized budget? Your expenditures through the month? What is your total maximum authority based on what we are projecting and what percent is that? So based on our projections to date, they have spent 25% of their maximum authority. Every year in the last four years, after this month, they've been actually a little bit higher. So this is trending in a good way. And the last thing is where are we going to end the year? Okay, this is, the $190 million is what we expect to spend. We think we'll have an unspent balance of $1.6 million. We're going to end at a positive .85. Now, I do want to point out that last year, we ended at 1.08. Once we add in all the variables that are added into last year, we will be much higher. We will be closer to five, four to five percent. So what this does, this allows the district to understand where are they this month? On revenues, on expenditures, on unspent balance? How does that compare to the prior four years and where are we going to end the year? Now, right now, if this .85 was negative, it ought to be setting off alarms. If you tell the board that they're going to end up negative, they will want to do something. They won't just ignore it. Also, on your report, we tried to identify the biggest differences in expenditures. What was down, what was up, what's making a difference? And in revenues, the same thing. So giving the board an explanation of where they are, how they compare, and where they're going to end the year is the purpose of this report. Every board ought to be asking these exact same questions every month.
So I would, what I would add is this is, this topic between what I covered originally on the SBRC conversation about cuts and what Gary just covered right now are, in my opinion, your biggest reasons for optimism as a state board. Because the board member's reaction to this conversation was, I would, I would put it as very positive. Their reaction was very positive. They haven't had this information before. So, you know, in the past, it's been a responsibility of theirs. And they, I believe they knew it was their responsibility, but they were not getting this kind of information to act upon the information to make their responsibility come through. They had very positive reaction, both at that finance committee level as well as the entire board of saying, this is what we've been asking for. This is what we need to make better decisions than we have in the past. And I will tell you, I am optimistic with the board's response to this. I think we need to make it routine. We need to make it a pattern. They need to see this all the time and start to make decisions based on it. Until we see decisions being made based on this information, we will still have work to do. But their reaction to having information was really good. And that, that's why I would think that you, as a state board, may be able to have some optimism about it being different in the future than it has been in the past.
Yeah, Bill, I'm really glad to hear that. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, I mean, that it was just information, they know that they're actually having this, you know, the information that they should have been having all along, that they're equal, you know, that they're happy to have this information and that they can make the correct decisions moving forward. I think there are some board members on. Are there any Davenport School Board members on the line that would like to say a few words?
There are board members. We actually received a message from one. It would be better, perhaps she just wants to speak for herself, so I'm going to promote her to panelist. Or I was, and then she moved on me. Or I was, and then she moved on me.
Man for cover.
So Director Beck will be joining us as a panelist. But I can promote.
All right, hi.
Hi.
Hi there.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Allison Beck. I've been on the Davenport School Board for three years now. And I was just telling Amy that one of the things I'm hearing, one of the questions that you guys had was whether we, you know, were in the dark as a board and whether we really knew what was going on. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, a number of us have talked about communication and a need for more transparency for basically the entire time I've been on the board. And that we really didn't know what we didn't know. And so having this line item budget is one thing that really goes a long way towards improving that communication within the board and between the board and the administration. But it is a matter of rebuilding some of that trust that when we are asking for information, that we are getting the information that we've been asking for in a timely fashion and in a way that we can actually make educated decisions with that information.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, this definitely explains a lot. I think that that's super important to have that information in order to make decisions. So I'm happy that you're getting it now.
And Allison, those three markers that Gary gave you, seems to me those are the critical things that you really have to be concerned about. What's this month look like? How's that compare? And now, where are we going to be at the end of the year? Seems to me if, if you were aware of those three markers, what a heck of a difference that would make if you talk about those each meeting.
Absolutely, and I could not, I couldn't agree with you more. That is, having that information has really been an eye opener. I can't speak for other board members, but, you know, I am not a budget expert. I'm an educator and a scientist. And so, you know, I didn't know what a line item budget was. And so having this opportunity now to have the information that we didn't have, again, you don't necessarily know what you don't know. It's really, really helpful. And we're looking forward, at least I'm looking forward to really being able to make some good decisions.
We've also talked about one of the other really big numbers for, for the board, and that's the ratio of personnel costs. And I think the board has become more aware of, of that as an issue. Was discussed extensively with the finance committee and will continue to work on that. But I, I think Director Robbins might have asked the question, does this get it down to 80? And I hope that the board members that are on, the Davenport board members that are listening right now realize the reason why Director Robbins asked that question is because that's your, that's the goal. And if it's at 84.3 right now, it, it's 4.3% of the, the overall budget that is the goal to move it toward. And you'll start to get that information through Gary and through the CFO as well.
The follow-up question for Bill or Gary or whomever. Obviously, the district will probably be on the 1% budget guarantee for next year with the loss of enrollment. And I was glad to see that you instituted a hiring freeze, at least temporarily. But with the 1% budget guarantee coming in at above water, hopefully at the end of this year, depending upon negotiations, 1% will go a long ways for next year unless the legislature allocates a huge number for allowable growth.
The district is facing right now a $452,000 budget guarantee, which will certainly be beneficial to have the authority, but it will put real stress on property tax. Over the next two years, the district's going to have to work very hard to maintain that property tax. Right now, as we're starting projections, we're making assumption of zero supplemental state aid for next year. I, I don't think we can plan on any more of that. But what we'll do, once that is determined, is prior to April 15th, when the budget's certified, we will take a look at all staffing, all levels, all types, and then try to bring down that, that ratio.
Gary has also done a great job of modeling beyond just this, this next budget year. And so we know that, you know, the 1% is good to have next year, but then there's a cliff that comes after that, when that goes away. And so Gary's, Gary is starting to create that model to level that levy rate over the next couple of years as well.
Any more questions?
Brooke, I wanted to let you know that there are two more board members who are present that I promoted to panelists, just in case they had anything that they wanted to add. So Director Gosa and Director Klein Jerome have also joined.
Do either of you want to make a comment?
I will. I'm Dan Gosa, I'm the Vice President of the Davenport Board. I just kind of want to answer some of your questions. We were asking some of the questions, we just weren't getting the accurate information back. There was a lot of smoke and mirrors going on, which we've kind of figured that stuff out. And with the board workshops and stuff, myself and President Potts have worked with Harry, with the ISB to kind of get some workshops going that helps our board be more productive about it. But at the same time, when you have an employee that's not giving you accurate information and stuff, it does make it hard to make those decisions. And I've been asking about a line item budget since my entire time being on the board. But again, when you're a board member starting out, your first training with the ISB, you're told not to get into the weeds. You should trust your administration and do stuff like that. And that's things I've talked to the ISB about as well, that you do kind of have to, it's not necessarily micromanaging, but you need to know the questions to ask to make sure things are going right, because that's what keeps the honest people honest. But it, it sucks that this has happened to us, but I'm glad because it's opened a lot of people's eyes on things. We're getting asked the right questions. We're getting the right information. We were told we didn't have a lot of talent in our central office. But yet we do, because they're all there putting in the work, getting these things done that we needed to get done. So obviously, we have our issues and we're working through it. But I appreciate all the support and Bill's at every one of our meetings and he kind of guides us through things. And the board's been more active in asking a lot of questions and trying to get on committees to right the ship, because obviously, things weren't done right. And we're trying to correct that stuff, because at the end of the day, we need to do it best for our students. And I apologize about all the background noise. My son's in the other room playing with his toys, so.
You about that?
That's me on like every Zoom call, so I try to get that. Well, thank you for speaking. I mean, I think it's definitely been a, just from your comments today, you and Allison, I think it's been a real growth experience for your board. And it sounds like, you know, you guys are coming out on the other side and now you kind of know what you need to be asking about and what information should be being presented to you. And if that's not happening, then, you know, then you can take more steps and ask more questions. So I think that's good, you know? So like you said, I think this has been an eye opening experience for the board. So, so I think that's really good for the future.
I, I don't want to put Director Klein Jerome on the spot if she doesn't want to be, but, you know, it was nice to hear from Director Beck and Director Gosa. Director Klein Jerome is a member of the finance committee. And so again, I, Director Klein Jerome, I will apologize in advance if I'm putting you on the spot, but if you have any, if you have any comments, that would probably be helpful for the state board to hear.
I, I do appreciate all the help and support we're giving. I am new. I've just been on a year, but I worked in the district 32 years prior to this. So what goes on in the district is not as new to me as somebody who's coming in. I also feel that, you know, when you, we made budget decisions last year and we said, yes, you're going to cut these staffing positions, we trusted it was going to happen. So to be told now that it didn't happen, I think we were shocked because like Dan Gosa said, we were told it was going to happen. We tried to stay out of the weeds, but apparently that was a mistake on our part. I do think we're heading in the right direction. I really do appreciate working with Gary. I think we will get our budget where it needs to be and keep going that way down the road. So I'm, I think there are some really good things that are lying ahead for Davenport. And a firm believer in Davenport, like I said, I worked in Davenport for 32 years. I will always support this district.
Thank you.
And then I was actually just told Linda Hayes is a longer-serving board member. And Linda, I don't know if you have any comments that you want to make?
Um, yes, thank you for your time. I just wanted to say that I echo what the previous members have said. And again, it's not that we were never interested. Again, we didn't know what we didn't know. And like everyone has said, you know, we've even had statements, if you hire us to do this, then you don't have to worry about it. And we pretty much just took it. But as Gary can remember, a couple of meetings ago, he was sharing information. And I told him that I've done all the finance classes that we've had, and I learned more in his first presentation than I had learned in all the classes that I'd attended, because he actually gave us numbers that were pertaining to our district that we can see, again, what we didn't know. So I'm very thankful and very hopeful that now that we're on the right path with the assistance of the state and the AEA, that we will do much better. Because again, if you're being told information and not given a full disclosure of what's going on, what can you do? And, you know, when you don't know what you don't know, again, questions never come up because you just figure the people that are there, that you're paying to take care of the work, is doing everything that needs to be done. So again, all I can say is unfortunate that we had these horrible reviews, but again, the bright side of it, if we didn't have these reviews, that it wouldn't help us to become a stronger district. But I feel that we will be pumped with the assistance of all of you folks.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. Wow. Well, I'm happy that we have the right people in there now.
Thank you, everybody, for being here for part of this. I think it's important, and we're, we're really grateful that you took the time to be here and to hear from all of you directly. So thank you so much for your work. And again, you know, Bill and Shane and everybody on the ground there, your support has been tremendous, and we're grateful for all of you, Gary, and the work at that board. So, you know, I think with everybody else, we share hope also about where we're going. Thomas does have an update real quick for the group.
Madam Chair, just a brief update based on what Chief Becker, Chief Decker gave in his first few remarks about hiring a CFO. The recommendation, the resolution passed by this board in September talked of an interim CFO. And then that may or may not be realistic going forward. So perhaps in January, this board, to keep in alignment with what's going on in the district and moving the district forward, might need to recalibrate or reconsider if an interim CFO is necessary. Or if the CFO position isn't filled, what type of support to provide just to keep our work and the district's work and the AEA's work in alignment? So.
Do we have to vote on?
That would be something I would suggest bringing in January, in case it's still an issue. But I just wanted to call it to, to the board's attention that we need to be responsive to what's, to what we hear from the folks providing support to the district. It may, it may be a moot point, but.
I got you. I think it's fine, okay.
Are they okay to go ahead and, and offer a contract to someone for that CFO position without us doing that ahead of time?
I think that the, the position has been vacant the whole time. There's been somebody serving in an interim. The district needs to have a CFO. I think we'd be involved in the process.
They currently don't have a CFO?
If somebody's serving in an interim role, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
But aren't they trying to hire a permanent CFO? And wouldn't we want to get on board with that now? As opposed to hindering Mr. Decker from doing what he's doing?
My recommendation would be, my recommendation would be to sort of conform our resolution to the reality of what's going on. If they're able to hire a CFO, hire a CFO. Reduce that uncertainty and, you know, remove that extra transition. I would expect that the department through Chief Decker would be involved in that process.
I, I think the only difference is that would you approve, and again, we are part of approving this person, was that it was going to be for up to six months to be extended. We just want to maybe adjust that recommendation, knowing that that was not a viable pathway. And so we want just to formally mirror that, so it would, it would support the long-term hiring of that position. So I don't think it impedes him from doing that now. It would just clarify the extending that, that this is now permanent.
Except that if I'm the candidate and I'm offered the job that we've approved, but I want a permanent job, I have some doubt about my tenure.
So just to clarify, the district is still hiring. So the local board will still offer the contract and employ the CFO. So it doesn't prevent that. We have said at a minimum of six months to do that. So I think, I think what you're saying is that, does that make that person, you know, uncomfortable that we haven't approved it for long or we said minimum? So if we've done that, I think we'd be okay, unless, Thomas and you, Brian?
I agree with this, that the six-month should not be interpreted as a lid on any contract that's offered. And if the, if the district is able to fill that position, sort of, you know, there's two paths. The district is able to fill it, or it's not. If it is, then we'd have to, you know, conform our resolution. The board would have to conform its resolution to sort of say, that's done. It's still under the department's supervision, but it's done. If it's not able to hire a CFO, and that pushes out beyond six months, we'll probably need to reconsider, the board will probably need to reconsider that anyway. Because, January will be fourth, the fourth of six months. And the March meeting will be the sixth month. So in, in either event, depending on the reality of hiring, that portion of the resolution will probably need to be recalibrated.
Okay.
So really, there's nothing that we need to do at this point that would prevent them from?
Correct.
They can go ahead and hire. So yeah, I think, yeah.
Just bring it to your, maybe it caused more problems by raising it, but I just want us to be aware.
I, I had the same question, Thomas, that, that when you brought it up, I was thinking about this as we were going along. And I'm just looking at it from the perspective of the person who may be hired. I'm going to want that cleared up when I get hired. I don't want to wait until after I'm hired and move my family or whatever, you know?
I do think that, I do think there has been questions by the local board on how this is going to work, that we're looking at bringing a candidate to the, the local board. And do they have the ability to make this hire on their own? And what, what effect should it have in the, in this search? And so this conversation is very pertinent. If I, if I were to throw this out, I think that the district would still have the ability to approve this hire. And, and then the board could come back and say, does this fit the, the requirement that we wanted? Or do we need to do something more?
And I think the thing that we've been balancing all along is the distinction between we do not authorize the hiring or firing of anybody. We sort of are authorizing the approval and oversight. And so I think that was key to our conversation with the superintendent. That's been key to our conversation when the board took action on early retirement. There are decisions that they have to make and will continue to make from a contract standpoint. This is more of an oversight threshold. So I think with that separation allows it to still go forward. The key is that it's with our approval, and it has to go through us. The key is that it's with our approval and it has to go through us for consideration. So they can't act separately from that. But at the end of the day, the authority of the board to hire and fire and make financial decisions that affect their own communities or property tax and decisions like that have to live with the district. So we're continuing to be mindful of that. We feel comfortable that's where we are. And again, if that changes as we go forward, we certainly want to do what is in the best interest of the district as we discover this. So this is a first example where, you know, the reality of how it plays out, maybe we have to adjust to make sure that the district is set up to be as successful as it can be.
One other part of this skip pattern is the two candidates that the Chief, Chief Decker hypothetically mentioned. One who is currently, currently has a school business official authorization and one who had not, and who would need an interim or initial license. So that may vary the degree to which the department provides oversight. Is this somebody who's fully qualified or attaining that qualification on the job? That's, that's another layer of reality that would need to be addressed. But I think that addressing it in January, based on a, based on maybe a December report or an early January report from the district and the AEA, that would be my proposal rather than addressing it today because we might be revisiting it in January anyway.
If this were in any way an impediment to Bill, before we meet again, we could, we could call it in December, right? I mean, we could, I mean, as an emergency. Yeah, if this is an impediment to hiring in any way, we can do that.
If need be, yes.
I'm just saying.
My opinion is that it is, that it's not, it's not a lid on the term of the contract.
And I don't think it's the six months. I think it's the interim nature of carry out the action plan. That, that's what I'm concerned about. It's not, it is, it's six months or more. I get that. But it was to carry out an action plan. There'll be, a permanent job would exceed the duration of the action plan. That, that's all. I don't want to belabor this because it probably is going to resolve itself. But I just wouldn't want somebody to not accept the job per the current, our resolution because it's not clear. So I hope they come interim, you know, come back to us and, and ask us to fix it when we need to, I guess, even if that's before January.
Right, I appreciate you bringing this up. I do appreciate you bringing this up. This is, this is an issue that I think there's going to have to be conversation of the Davenport Board and the candidate and bring it back to the State Board so that we can get a resolve.
I have a different question. Maybe Bill, you can answer this for me. I'm not sure how to phrase this, but is the, the Davenport School Board's superintendent who is still there, is he involved in all of these discussions? I'm very impressed with all that's being done in the financial area. I think the board is doing a good job. But he could become superintendent once the direct involvement of the Department of Ed ends. So is he involved in, in this process? Is he, is he involved in these meetings?
So the direct answer here is no. Amy, I don't know if I can draw upon you to maybe take the lead there. I mean, we've, we've basically been working through this as a group and, and maybe Amy can give you a more direct answer.
Yeah, I'm happy to. And Director Lee, both chime in if you'd like. So we purposely made a decision that Dr. Kowalski would work from home, not be officing at the district's central office while TJ is serving as interim superintendent because it causes some dissonance for staff to know. So who is acting, who is the superintendent that I'm reporting to? So it's not that Dr. Kowalski is no longer superintendent employed by the district. He is, he is the contracted superintendent. But in order to get us through this period of at least six months that the board has taken operational control of the district, it's important that there is one person speaking with one voice as the acting superintendent, and that need to be TJ. So in the event that the situation's rectified in the six-month period or whatever time period, and Dr. Kowalski's there and going to take back over the reins, we will ensure that there is a transition period where he's fully informed. But for now, it's important that the staff members there know that TJ is leading this. And Dr. Kowalski understood that completely and, and said that he, he wanted TJ to be successful during this time and has simply stepped back.
That's a good question. Thank you, Amy.
Does he have a one-year contract with the district, Amy?
So one of the board members can correct me if I'm not right about this, but he originally signed, I believe it was a two-year contract. And so this would be his second year.
Thank you.
No, he has a three-year contract and he is just beginning the second year.
Thank you.
So he still has one more year after this. Okay. Thank you. I have a question about the, because you raised this, raised this, Thomas, I think. The, one of the candidates has, does have his, what did you say it was?
SBO license.
The what? The license?
SBO, not license.
School Business Official Authorization.
So how, how does one get, like, is that a problem or is that, how does one get that?
And I'll let folks who actually know what they're talking about, such as curious and clear, chime in. But if I have a, if I have an initial, like, an initial sort of foundation of knowledge and experience, X number of college credit hours, X number of years of work experience, X number of those credits in accounting, I can get an initial license. And then while I'm working on my full authorization, I can practice as an SBO while I go through this two-year period of coursework and mentorship. And at the end of that two-year period of coursework and mentorship, I receive a full authorization. So the SBO who is coming, the CFO who's coming from private industry would have some additional supports and coursework necessary before she or he received that authorization. And somebody can correct me if I misspoke, but it's not a, it's not a barrier. It's just some additional work for that candidate.
Okay, okay.
That is my understanding as well, Thomas, that that, that is not a barrier. And, and I will tell you that the private candidate is the CFO of a business that has more revenue than, than the district has. So it's not someone that's, it's a stretch to imagine them being in this position.
Thank you. I just didn't, sorry, I wasn't aware of that. I didn't know. Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? I think we're behind, so. Really behind, sorry. Well, thank you so much.
I do know we're behind, but I just want to take just a couple of minutes. No, not a couple of minutes, just a couple of comments here. You know, we, we do focus on a lot of things that, that need to be improved. And I think you've heard that the district and the board understand that improvement needs to be made. But there are a lot of good things going on for students and our, our job does need to be to accentuate that and so that all students get to be a part of excellence. And I do believe the board has a goal for that to happen. And I'm very anxious myself to get this work to move from the conversation today to be a conversation more on how do we entice kids of all race and ethnic background into excellence and post-secondary options? And I do believe we will get there.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you for the board members who attended today. Appreciate it.
We're actually running about where we were scheduled to take a break. Should we just take a break and then jump back up to Diagonal? Or do you want to do that to start beyond?
Let's stay diagonal and then take a break.
Great. So Diagonal Community School District Accreditation Update.
Thank you. My name is Eric Hites. I'm with the Department of Education and I'm one of the team members here that will help with the presentation. This will be, the information is on TAB R in your pocket. And what we're doing today is a board follow-up. And I'm going to be turning it over to Janet Boyd now.
Thank you, Eric. As you know, we have been working with Diagonal Community School District for a period of time. And I'm excited to tell you that all of their corrective actions have been completed. So the 60 corrective actions that they had had have all been corrected. And if you notice, the attachment shows that they're all colored in gold. And our recommendation for Diagonal is that, that the State Board revisit Diagonal's Community School District's maintenance of accreditation standards through the universal desk audits and other required data collection methods that the, that the department does. And one thing I would also say, you know, they've had a history of issues and offer and teach. And we were given special permission to go on-site October 27th. And the district was gracious enough to host us there after students had left. And we did a hand audit of all the student schedules in the high school to make sure that not only were they offering courses, but they were actually students in the courses. And they have met their offer and teach requirements for this year. So that's really all I have. We've got Carleen Stevens and Lorna Paxson from the district here, if the board has any questions of them.
Does anyone have any questions?
Congratulations. Yes. Pretty amazing.
I'm so excited to hear that.
Thank you. They have always been very accommodating to us and worked with us. And it's been a long process and we appreciate their cooperation.
Jenna, what does intensive monitoring mean to you in terms of follow-up with the district? What does that mean?
We, we are available to them for any kind of technical assistance that they need. And then we try to, before the pandemic, we tried to go on-site monthly and work with them. Like one time, we went on-site and we did like a mini-training for Equity Coordinator. We went on-site at one point and did a, got a title person on Zoom and went through title requirements. Like this last time we went on-site, we literally, when I talk about offer and teach and hand-checking their offer and teach, that's not what we normally do at districts. I mean, we're pretty sure, you know, absent of actually going into classrooms and seeing the students in the classrooms, that's a pretty intensive way to look at offer and teach. And we're, we're pretty confident that.
You have that all ready.
Things go well, we're confident in that offer and teach. That, that's what I, and Eric, I don't know if there's anything you would add or Amy?
I just want to know how, how that's different than normal monitoring in the district or normal auditing of the district? That you'll, you'll do more monthly checks or?
Yeah. Mike, it's been a while since we talked to the board about our differentiated accountability process. But the gist of it is that we monitor every district, every AEA, every preschool program with a basic, what we call the universal level of monitoring with a desk audit every year. And those are really basic things that we think are critical to running a school or running an AEA. And they range from basic accreditation to handling your federal programs and equity. And then we can bump people up to targeted monitoring or intensive monitoring, or then also bringing it to the State Board. It's like, it's when they get into intensive that we actually start bringing it to you. So if you remember the visual that I show you a lot where we have the arrow and it shows where it starts coming to the State Board, that's when it becomes intensive. And the difference is whether we try to do things at the department, we bring in desk audits, we kind of look at the data that we have and determine whether this looks like a high-risk situation, or it becomes more of a, more intensive desk audit where we ask for more information. Or do we start going on-site typically, look at things that you can only do on-site and asking questions of people, doing kind of interviews, and then even looking at instructional practices.
I just want to know what that looked like. So thank you. Thanks, thanks to all of you.
And I'm always happy to do a refresher on it because it's kind of fun and what we do, so.
I would move that we allow this district to move on. We recommend that they have full accreditation and with intensive monitoring. That, that. Is that an action item?
They're already fully accredited. What, the thing that we need from you is to allow them to stop reporting to you on a monthly basis.
Can I change your motion?
Sure. Yeah, we'll move. I would move that they don't have to report to us monthly. Is that, is that, will that work? And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, mustn't carry.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Bye.
I thought you were happy. Can I take a break now? Let's take a break. Take a break. Do 25, like, give us five, six minutes? Or is my watch wrong?
No, yeah, it's 2:19 right now.